But I cannot grant you. So.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, but. It's the driver. That's it. And um.
Yes.
My. I'm telling them.
It's now so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just think.
Yeah, yeah. How do you think that has? It changed.
All right.
Oh, really? Is that like a? So.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's not quite there. Uh. Like, let's see. Some. This is.
Hold. Thank you. That's fine.
Yeah. What's um, what was the, what's the order we're going with?
Uh, probably first.
Probably first, okay. Alright, so we'll do probably first all. And sit um. Also there for that. And then. Yeah, I guess we'll just go to it first, but. Uh. So yeah, if I guess if you go from here to.
We're gonna be uh. With the. Yes. Right. Right now.
Inside of. On here.
You got fast. No, no, no. Things you could then. The rest this year. We can be. We just left it at forty. That's. Worth what. Oh, it's a total U brace.
How can you? Go. To play.
It's that the mission to German.
Yeah, it's meant to like keep us on until he like calls a tour and then we can do that. Um, I think you can, or you click this. You can go to it, yeah.
In this job, but at some point, somebody could.
Alright.
But. I mean. What do you think about?
Yeah. Well, then.
They ask you respectfully, this is.
That should be.
This is the main call.
Yeah. So. Change this. I'm trying to. Chat. Oh. You know. I mean. That was funny. Wait. Yeah. All of them. Yeah. He's. He's.
You know, it's. It had me too.
Okay.
Seeing picture. Yeah.
Not even. I think. Don't follow me. Well, I bet. Thank you. You know. Yeah, I don't fly down with your shit. Well, I'm going. Yeah. Very good. Okay.
All right, it is six oh five, we'll call to record the meeting. Tuesday, November fourteenth, City of Albany Planning Board Meeting. Um, first order of business for board members. We'd like to make some adjustments to the agenda. We look on page three to five of our packet. Um, we have sixty-four Coleman Avenue, we have to make that first. And would also like for you to note that the item on the bottom of page four, which is five seven five Broadway, has been postponed for this meeting. Our final request. Though that there's, I don't believe there's an action on the Coleman Avenue piece, but we do have people here that have come to speak in audience to this, so um. Without objection, we will adopt the agenda, any objections? Seeing none, we will um make that adjustment and advance. So I'd like to welcome everyone, joined by my fellow board members, I am Sarah Chris Ellis, joined by Vanessa Lee Yard, Mark Paul, Shadi Ketterby, and Rachel Breister. We'll have a great meeting tonight, as always, looking forward to getting the feedback from the presenters, as well as those that have signed up to provide a comment, have an interesting um brief um proposal for us today. And without. You know, for the technicalities, we shall advance, for those presenting, there are, we have ten minutes for elected officials, there are six minutes provided to you to provide a comment, and the general public three minutes. And um, you know, we'll provide our back and forth and feedback as well, so. Again, we'll start with sixty-four Coleman Avenue, Hirschberg and Hirschberg, this is Development Plan Review. Construction of a one hundred eight thousand five hundred four square foot multi-unit dwelling to accommodate a hundred and twenty dwelling units and one story at three thousand six hundred fifty-four square feet of retail built in person, yes ma'am.
Oh, question. There was a thing before, I want to aim here to speak. I don't know how to do what the principal thought. Yeah. And it was. The. When you're trying to do them here, but that's a good idea.
When we get to the public comment piece, somebody from our staff will probably get your name. Absolutely, Mr. Hirschberg, board, nice to know you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, with me, Natalie Brick, who's the attorney for Freedom Springs, all may all see. I've seen this project before, putting in over the project change. Uh, we have modified the site plan, which uh, give a bit to the third side. Do we have control?
We do, yeah, let's see if it works. Moment of truth.
Live one to five. Now, I can do that here.
Need to turn on. Not advancing, okay.
There we go.
Well, that was me. Sorry.
Site plan that's been revised. The previous plan for fire protection, we will get uh a road that applies with the fire protection with all around the building. We have a gate between that and the Army garage, so it's not used for regular access, just for emergency access. The um, other advantage is it gives us a chance to save some of the gray adjoining Anthony Street and adjoining Western Hills Park. By moving away from both Anthony Street and the Western Hills Park lines, we have some vegetation that we can um maintain on that. The building in front, it previously had been two stories that had uh a horse on the first floor and a uh apartment as well, and now it should be a commercial one started building. The uh, hundred and twenty units are still affordable housing, uh, and as the program has not changed, they're still uh you know, uh, in the project, in the process of um finalizing details that we required for. Let's say. Evening. This is the uncoincidence, but this actually shows new detail on there, we added a big block cross uh plus uh crossing up Coleman Avenue. That's up by the entrance driveway into Hannaford. That was added at recessed uh traffic engineering, we worked it over and they, these people, number one, trying to go that direction, would not go backwards and go to Anthony Street and then go forwards, they would bend directly in that direction, they wanted to buy the uh assigned crosswalk there, so we've added that crosswalk uh adjoining that uh uh far opposite the driveway into uh Hannaford Plaza. This is the stormwater manic facility, was a major issue previously because the uh, the dising system uh was overpowered during previous floods uh and water came out of the site on Coleman Avenue. This one solved the problem on Coleman Avenue, it's closed and out, you know, there was no drainage coming from the site at all, there's an attic with drainage system on Coleman Avenue, just to handle the drainage from the sites. But this system will reduce the flow coming from our site. Figure this entire site as grass, it's not grass now, it's tarred and paved. But if you look at it as grass, a lot less water would come off, it would then still want to pay. Well, that's how we consider, we want, we were, we are um discharging less water than we were discharged previously. It was entirely grass, so that meets the USDA code, that we exceed USDA code by actually exceeding um the level required. Uh landscape plan, we've added a certain amount of landscaping. The note along Anthony Street says that uh we are um we are directed by um the city forester, or the city uh arborist now, the city arborist to remove uh trees along that run that are um hemlocks. Hemlocks people are aware of are subject to a uh disease, a bug-borne disease, which is killing hemlocks in great numbers in our forest. Uh, you said these already had signs of deterioration, so he asked us to take down the hemlocks. And we said we would, and we placed in whatever trees is selected by the city arborist, which will be done during the project, and he wanted to work that way. And I think that's the best way to do it, because when we clear out the uh hemlocks, there's some other trees to say some are in better condition than others, some will still have to be trimmed to see how they look. But we'll look at it after we, after we take the hemlocks out of there, if there are trees that have turned back and see where and how many trees be it. We have added a row of uh white fir along the back there because that's a good screening tree, and uh it's clear that um, that area where they're shown has very little uh trees other than the hemlocks along that. The lighting plan was made up and it does contain the lighting within the site, uh some of it goes over onto the driveway between sixty-four, which is this site, and sixty-six Coleman Avenue, which is the previously approved self-storage, which is in the, it is in Army Garage. On that, they intend to start shortly, uh applying for building permitting going forward to get this self-storage building up and running. Uh, but the rest of the site is all self-contained, the 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 lighting does not fall over onto adjoining properties. Uh, so we think that it's a good lighting plan, provides adequate lighting for the people walking uh through the building uh and for people actually driving to the building. Here's, this is a door plan, which uh uh shows the uh the first floor. And like I said, these units are all uh affordable housing, there's some different sizes, there's one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and uh and a couple of three bedrooms, I think. The main building elevations are shown here on. Uh, these have been adjusted based upon comments we heard about conforming with the USDA design standards. We believe it's become very close to doing what is the rest of them. And this is little bit of an elevation, so. This is an area view looking west, up in the sky, looking west towards the line of trees, behind the buildings is actually where Anthony Street is. And the trees behind it are on a hill that separates uh the site from Western Hills Park. Uh, you can see that we did change the um elevations of the one-story building to emphasize the entrance from Coleman Avenue, the previous one sort of gave up on people coming that direction or coming from the rear, we realized that that was not the goal or the code. So we arranged the buildings so the main entrance is the main entrance and then base it down on Coleman Avenue. Uh, this is from the corner of the site looking northeast. And this is from a view from Coleman Avenue looking west. Okay. Chris, my. Question. Great asking question for the board.
Absolutely, um, Laura, it is a pleasure to hear the comments first, or um you can do both, you can ask questions now, we have them.
Yeah. Um, first. Yes.
Thanks. We'll start with the public speakers. First, Brian Schneider. Laura George, please say your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you again for having me, good evening, I'm Brian Schneider, I'm, I actually live in Latham, New York, I have been a resident of Albany County for the last thirty-five years, and I am presenting in my capacity as the Executive Vice President and CFO of Gateway Hudson Valley in support of the sixty-four Coleman Avenue uh project. This project um will transform the lives of many people. And I'm Gateway Hudson Valley, we actually are working with developers to to provide support services for thirty seniors, once this um, you know, development is built. Um, and we have a deep understanding, Gateway Hudson Valley, providing supportive services and working with housing developers and landlords, and we're really developed sense of the lobby and the in the Hudson Valley, to which uh we provide services in Ulster, Duchess, Greens, and Columbia Counties, we provide housing services for nearly three hundred people. And fortunately, we have an excellent reputation in those communities where we're based, and we're fortunate to have strong working relationships with all stakeholders, and we want to do the same in the city of Albany and the greater Albany County. Um, we want to work closely with the community to ensure people that already reside in the city will offer a safe, right place to live with excellent support, excellent supports to enhance their quality of life. And I mean, as we know, that intersection at Central Avenue and Coleman was perfect for people, um, it has public transport, there's two grocery stores, it has the West Gate Plaza, it's just an excellent area for um people to feel safe, really be involved in the community. And in closing, I will be personally involved in this project with closely with the authorities and Gateway Hudson Valley's management team. I have a great deal of experience in the Albany nonprofit community, I was an assistant executive director at Albany A R C and worked many years at the Center for Disability Services, so I know Albany well, I know the city well, I know many of the stakeholders. And I know this project will be a huge benefit to the city, citizens of the city, and will create a warm and inviting environment to the Coleman Central Avenue community. Thank you, I don't know if there are any questions about.
Are there any questions from the board? Thank you very much, thank you. Thank you. This is Carol Carlin.
Carol Carlin, one sixty-two Rosemont Street. So the, I'm basically gonna read what I had written. Uh, having spent the last sixty-five years living in the city, the past fifty as a resident of Westland Hills, specifically the last thirty-eight on Rosemont Street, I consider myself a very informed Albany citizen. Having grown up in North Albany, Arbor Hill, and Westland Hills, and attended all the public schools, I believe I have a good understanding of my neighborhood and the city in general, having raised my family there. Uh, my husband and I made a conscious decision to stay in Albany and raise our children there. We do not want them to think everyone lived in a little bit long meal which is bad. As a child, having lived in government subsidized housing and an apartment rental unit, I have casino development, I have concerns on behalf of casino development, on behalf of the future and existing neighborhood residents. They include, one, the quality of the construction materials, uh we know the true test of construction is how it endures five to ten years down the road. Everything looks great, brand new, who will ensure the quality of those materials used? Support services, what twenty-four hour by seven day services will be available to the veterans and seniors? Uh, we have persistent water and flooding issues on Coleman Avenue as the climate crisis worsens. Can we expect more torrential downpours and flooding? Traffic, the studies submitted as part of the city knows proposal indicates a significant degradation of wait times at the traffic light on Coleman and Central Avenue, it's almost one minute without the Chick-fil-A even being considered. This indicates a change in circumstance, I also have concerns uh for uh Austin Avenue and Tremont Street and the safety of Montessori school students as drivers avoid the Coleman and Central Avenue intersections, I think we know people will take the path of least resistance. The pilot and sales tax exemption request, what will be the impact to the property and school tax base in a city that already has a plethora of tax exempt property? Will the existing homeowners have to pick up that slide? The safety of residents and children, currently there are five east-west egresses and ingresses within six hundred feet of that intersection. What happens when Chick-fil-A is allowed to construct a restaurant on the southwest corner of Coleman and Central? Housing, has there been a paradigm shift in recent years regarding warehousing of people in multi-story dwellings versus single-family ownership of a habitat humanity uh paradigm? There are so many vacant buildings and lots throughout the city and existing neighborhoods that could be upgraded. And then finally, the casino's operations and management plan, who will manage the site, the casino hasn't communicated their intentions to date. The casino has yet to adequately address the neighborhood concerns, the majority of the casino's current development locations are centered in the Midwest, with New York being its first foray into the Northeast. The existing format for these meetings doesn't seem to allow for enough community engagement with the developers, the planning board, and the developers' engineering representatives. Albany city citizens need to rely on the planning board to ask the hard questions. The scene out to date has been evasive and not completely forthright in your development proposal. They have no vested interest in our community, it concerns me that a developer from Missouri who has built other projects in the area is not able to leverage those community constituents on its behalf. I believe it's because they overpromised and underdelivered. I always envisioned Coleman Avenue as an international restaurant destination, representing the wide diversity of cultures residing within the community. Sadly, I guess this will not come to pass, I'm requesting that you hold the developers' feet to the fire with respect to the above-known issues and not just rougher standard plans, we need responsible development in the city. With developers who have a vested interest in the overall well-being of New York residents.
Well overdue, and I didn't want to cut you off, but.
This is my last, I, I want to thank you, that was my last sentence, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. So Brian, see you as always.
Um, I'm Michael Brassman, I live in thirty-three Gander, I have it in Albany. I used to be the chemical number, and now I'm still on the day really like um acting president of the. Public Water and Safety, every so quick. You have received a great deal of information from our community, as noted in your written comments. I am just gonna focus on issues of traffic and flooding. Um, I know from a document that's already in your uh file, it's a site in two thousand nineteen, New York State Department of Transportation Traffic Study, which noted that on Central Avenue near Coleman Avenue, there are twenty-six thousand three hundred ninety-four vehicles per day. And on Coleman Avenue, exactly where this is going to be proposed, there are twelve thousand two hundred and three vehicles per day. Um, now, the problem that we have is there are basically four projects in the planning scope, there's a Chick-fil-A which we have not, I believe they just filed plans for that, we have not actually started them, I know that it's not come up before in the board yet. There's sixty Coleman Avenue which passed the board, I believe through it a half years ago, that's a sixty-three apartment development. They had problems in that excess, I know they are, they cannot use Anthony Street, they just park the park. We demonstrated that that is park land, they're not open to commercial development, we certainly invite visitors, we invite visitors from the department to use the park. We asked if they not park in the park, parking lot, because that would conclude park use from using that, that park lot, so that is one concern we had. And they're not walling off the park from new people moving in, we welcome the use. Just respect the fact that the park not in park is the park he gives. Um, the issue of the number of approaches on Coleman Avenue, by my count, there are at least twelve driveways coming into Walpark and Coleman, from Hannaford, from, you know, uh an oil change, one old place, from uh uh, from offices, from other apartments that exist there, let alone the new entrances that are gonna come in from sixty Coleman. And haven't been built yet, which will come in from this project, which will come in from the self-storage place, and which will come in from the Chick-fil-A. Now, I noticed that Dan Herter was pointing out that they propose to put a crosswalk opposite the Hannaford exit, first Hannaford exit on Coleman Avenue. Uh, two booths, that is going to be probably the exit for Chick-fil-A. I hope they plan on having some kind of a traffic control system to protect pedestrians attempting cars at that point. It's not like you are testing.
Sorry, I'm still not sure about that.
Siri, I guarantee you, I'm sorry.
Well, my point is, the trap, we have to, there are, there are too many unknowns now to adequately address the traffic play, twelve thousand two hundred and three cars already, putting pedestrians at a Chick-fil-A exit is not safe, and by the way, your, I did, Brad was able to pose the show like. the show like of the flood this year. Now, Dan Hurstford in his, in his documents say it's been scaled to withstand a ten-year flood. Not true. It floods every single summer, at least a foot or two, whatever. And we also noted, he noted the green space behind the buildings, which he said up ahead. And he said that's paved. That is not true. There is a woodland buffer. Not pretty, but it's a woodland buffer that absorbs water permanently. But right behind the park of Boundbury and Arbor Garage. I call it Arbor Garage, sixty-foot Colvin Avenue. That is property, almost sixty-four. When he shows it as green now, I hope they make it pretty, and I hope that they make it green. But it's not new green space. So it's the same amount, roughly the same amount of asphalt. Going to be constantly dumping water. After the crosswalk, they're going to direct everybody to cross that. I have a lot more to say, but I have fewer time, and I've said a lot of it in writing. And I appreciate your listening to us, and I respect the work that you guys do. I know you don't get paid for it, but you do it anyway. And we have my thanks.
Thank you very much.
Paul Lamar. Hi there. My name is Paul Lamar. I live at one forty-three Rosemont Street. Colvin Avenue is a tricky stretch. A commercial street running through a residential area. It also serves as a speedway between Washington Avenue and Central Avenue as far as off and zipped through the red light at the intersection of Colvin and Lincoln. Turn right on red when they're not supposed to. And completely ignore the recently installed crosswalk flashing sign at the corner of Anthony and Colvin. I know all of this because I frequently walk to Hattaway from my home. In a way, this is not the Sino's problem. This is on the surface, a separate issue, and probably we should take these problems up with the traffic department. But I think it is not a completely separate issue. And this is where the planning board comes in. It's one of the projects to be considered in a holistic way about the merits of new construction on the empty spaces of Colvin. Can affordable housing be built on Colvin? You bet. Should affordable housing be built on Colvin? Absolutely. NIMBY has never been one of the attitudes of the Sino's proposal. Because having a safe, sound, and pleasing home is a fundamental right and responsibility of government. Especially now in the skewed free market housing environment. But the questions we have raised about traffic, sewer, plans for the tenants, construction materials, tax abatement, and the Sino's history elsewhere are legitimate questions. Because answers to them will affect these new neighbors. As well as neighbors already here for decades to come. In other words, we ask the planning board to follow through carefully with each of our concerns. And require documentation about every matter, large and small, in a timely manner from the Sino. Which has not been the case with this company and Yvonne's requests. I know the Sino wants to build here. I know that the Sino wants to make a profit on the company from the project, but I'm hopeful that the Sino also wants to contribute in a positive way to the health and vibrancy of the community. And you were the only one to guarantee that. Thanks very much.
Mike Kelly.
Good evening. My name is Mike Kelly. I live at eighteen Dexter Avenue, three blocks east of Colvin Avenue. I've lived most of my life in Albany and in the very neighborhood east of Colvin Avenue. I wanted to speak tonight to voice my opposition to the one hundred and twenty residential units plus commercial development proposed by the Sino group for sixty-four Colvin Avenue. To be clear, my opposition centers around the density of the proposed development. The Sino proposal far exceeds the nearby Danker Village Apartments density of approximately twenty-two per acre. Far exceeds that. And specifically, my concern is for the safety of drivers and pedestrians in the active area. We've all heard about the multitude of pedestrians hit by cars when killed with children crossing Central Avenue. Around twenty sixteen, the New York State Department of Transportation conducted the Central Avenue Pedestrian Safety Study. The Colvin Avenue, Central Avenue intersection was identified as a hotspot for pedestrian accidents. The Albany Times Union reported the following on twenty-one February twenty sixteen, quote, "It was a very aggressive study looking at the infrastructure and also looking at human behaviors," end quote, said Sam Zoo, regional director of the State Department of Transportation. Quote, "Seventy-five percent of people don't cross at the crosswalk or wait for the signal," end quote, he said. Quote, "Some of the intersections, the compliance rate is in the single digits. Pathetic." And that Times Union article goes on to describe all the driver infractions involved in pedestrian accidents as well. And to be clear, I'm like Colvin Avenue either as a pedestrian or as a driver multiple times a day. And I see this time after time after time. Again, the area of Central Avenue around the Colvin intersection was identified as a hotspot for pedestrian accidents. And again, this is a driver and a pedestrian problem, an already known problem. This location at Colvin and Central is touted as a great location for new residential units because of the services nearby. But to get to those services, residents would need to navigate through a known dangerous intersection. In the process, make a known problem even worse by increasing pedestrian and automobile traffic. Other existing and ongoing infractions in the immediate area are simply never enforced. Customers of the New Asian Food Market and Oliver's Beverage Center, ninety-three and ninety-seven Colvin Avenue respectively, routinely park squarely in a sidewalk. In fact, if you go to Google Maps right now, you'll see cars parked on the sidewalks in front of both seventy-nine and ninety-seven Colvin Avenue in the latest imagery. This end of Colvin Avenue is basically an unimportant man for both drivers and for pedestrians. And this is before any new residential units, commercial spaces, or fast food restaurants have been built. This board's mission includes, quote, "To ensure that development proposed within the city is compatible with the orderly development of the immediate neighborhood and surrounding areas," end quote. The problem is that this area is already disordered. The approval of the one hundred and twenty proposed dwelling units and sixty-four Colvin Avenue. Additional commercial space, plus a fast food restaurant famous for attracting large customer crowds. And this on top of the already approved apartment complex at sixty Colvin Avenue would be a disservice to the neighborhood and the city. And would exacerbate and acknowledge pre-existing safety problems inherent in the existing roadway system and the known continuing problems with drivers and pedestrians. It is imperative that this board recognizes these pre-existing problems and contemplates their implications. And I'll, I'll reiterate what Paul just said. It's this board, this is planning, that this intersection is already a train wreck. And, and there's these four projects that Michael Brian's talking about, including this one. That are being, that are, that want to get in on the action on this intersection. It's already a train wreck. Thank you very much.
Karen Din.
This project? Yes. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity, even my concerns. I did send a letter, hope that you read that. It expresses other concerns that I have, but tonight I'd like to speak about the parcel six for Colvin. Which is where the Sino group, developer from the state of Missouri, has come to New York to build large living communities. Apartments for, people require assistance, assistance for different needs. As it was initially presented to the officers of the Upper Washington Avenue Neighborhood Association, Freedom Spring would be for homeless veterans. And I think we all care for vets. They were our grandfathers, fathers, sons, daughters. They're in our families. So we kind of embraced that. So our concern was, for that project, the density. It was too large. And we were told, quote, "They need the numbers to make it work." So we learned that locally, when a veteran needs housing, it is provided within twenty-four hours if they want to be housed. So where are these homeless vets coming from? Well, you know, it's hard to hit a moving target and things have been changing ever since their presentation. The population numbers began to change and the funding came into view. I discovered that the Sino group is seeking most of its funding from New York State Housing Finance Agency. They provide permanent loans, construction loans, subsidies with a four percent tax break. They're also seeking IDA money and grants and mortgage filing fees to be eliminated. They want a thirty-year payment in lieu of taxes, thirty years. That's, that's more than I think the city has ever seen. They want twenty years of property tax abasement. They're seeking one point three million dollars in state tax sales and tax exemptions, sales tax, excuse me. So that money helps fund our police, fire, EMS, CDTA, and our schools. They also are seeking money from Empire State Support Housing Initiative. That includes New York State Office of Temporary and Disability Assistance, Oasis, which is the office for addiction services. Those grants stipulate that at least fifty percent of the tenants must have substance abuse, domestic violence, or mental health issues. So therefore, these people need direct services. And they have applied for grants that also come from ESSHI by assisting the Albany Coalition for Housing to get a grant for one point four two million dollars per year. They're also seeking and have assisted Gateway Hudson Valley for another grant for seven hundred and fifty thousand a year. I'm glad that you're here tonight, sir. We'd like to talk to you. At any rate, thank you. So doesn't that seem like a lot of money being taken from the New York State taxpayers? I think it's a bundle. So as our city services will be required to increase, we're going to have to increase our funding. Our schools will need more financial support because one developer from the state of Missouri has selected all the need to make the money. So I'm asking you to consider how this project and others like it hurts local taxpayers. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gloria Russo, and I'm a fairly recent president of the Neighborhood of Albany, Upper Washington Avenue. I did that, I changed the plan street. Firstly, I want to say that I am for the construction of affordable housing in the city. However, the lack of the Sino's responsiveness to the Upper Washington Area Neighborhood Association's concern over the last year or two has been disingenuous, to say the least. However, I and Yvonne are relying on the planning board to ensure that the Sino's development contributes a positive change to both our neighborhood and the city, a welcoming place for new tenants to live. And that it not create any significant negative impacts on traffic, stormwater, quality of life, and city services. I am concerned about the Sino's operations and maintenance plan. Will the Sino ensure supportive services for their senior and veteran tenants? I just heard this evening, Mr. Schneider from Gateway Hudson Valley will be helping out with the Sino, I'm glad to hear that. But what other types of support services will they provide? Will the services be available twenty-four seven? Will the Sino be a responsive and an engaged property owner? For example, the Coho's IDA has stated that the Sino is not a good operator at their Coho's facility. And that the Sino is not in compliance with their funding sources. Has the Sino ever provided a response to the Coho's IDA? Has the Sino provided the planning board with information on who will manage the Colvin Development Site and how it will manage? In addition, the August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three letter from the Planning Department to Hersberg and Hersberg listed nineteen potential deficiencies, non-compliance with the Unified Sustainable Movement Ordinance in the Sino's plans. Has the Sino been responsive to Hersberg and Hersberg and revised their plans in accordance with all of those listed deficiencies? Thank you.
At least one more person that signed up for this project.
What was the name?
It was that gentleman that just came up.
Did you sign up?
For Clinton Phase Three, which is.
The last gentleman has just signed up.
Andrew.
Andrew.
Andrew McTry, twelve gauge avenue. I didn't really come prepared to the statement or anything, but I just wanted to vocalize just some support for building additional housing units within the city of Albany. And I can't, I'm definitely not speaking for other people here, but I'd like to leave you know, some of this development go forward, perhaps with, with plans that would, you know, prioritize pedestrian safety over, you know, some of this like personal vehicle centric development, which is, I think, what we've seen. I think that that's, it looks like what the other parcels are being focused around too, is a lot of car-centric development. Such like the self-storage unit, as well as the Chick-fil-A. So I'm hoping that put some pressure on to the developer. You know, they've decided to go forward with this project to make this a more pedestrian-friendly site. I bike down Colvin pretty regularly. It's scary. And I, and I, and I think then, I don't think the density of the units is going to be the issue as much as, you know, encouraging like, you know, a bunch of food traffic. It's a, it's a good location for units. It's right next to the ERT stop. It's near grocery stores. A park, and there's a lot of available space to make green space for like leveraging like some of this water runoff. That's it. Thank you.
Who's that?
Any additional?
That was it for the supporters to send up.
Staff of Morrison, questions? Questions? I think I've got a couple. Good. Well, thank you. Okay, all good for. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to ask a couple, but then one that I think we're going to go back to, that's the slides, to rendering the site plan.
Anyone in particular?
The start of the segment.
Okay.
Any final questions?
Oops, I'm sorry.
Just.
I'm just looking at proximity. Do you want to go to a rendering or no?
I want to go to the site plan.
Those are landscape plans, so this is.
The storage. Yeah. It seems very, it seems very, very close there. And then if we go to the rendering, it's a lot farther away. So I think we're maybe, you know, it would be good to have some of the rendering, yeah, let's go. Is that, is that definitely?
Again, I'm not so sure it would be random, but I think there's something with it's closer, it's over the top of the sixty-sixth Colvin Avenue. And I think by counting the parking spaces in front of it, it's in the right physical location, whether or not it's scaled properly. I can't speak for the vote.
It does, you know, it does. It's important, you know, obviously, I have.
Okay.
So we can, it's a good, great.
Okay.
Another question, what, what, what do you think that this we built?
Generally, we tell the. We don't have any township. We put it in because USB code asks for mixed use with commercial use. We tried to size it as something that we think we may be. We tried to size it as something that we think we may be able to fill with that. We made it much bigger and probably would not. So we think three thousand or four thousand square feet, but commercial space is doable there. We're not sure what. It's not set up for drive-through. It's not easy for people with in and out. Even for a bank without a drive-through, some banks don't have drive-throughs very few these days. But those sort of services, we're not good at it. It's very obvious. We do not have any drive-through. Every restaurant producing these things, very few restaurants, one restaurant without a drive-through. And that's, that's, we're not. If somebody wanted to come in with a, with a restaurant that was sit-down, they wanted to have a sit-down environment with family. The males is that sort of situation. We certainly recommend them. We don't have any funny yes. It's early in the process. They want to see where we're going with the rest of the process.
Yeah, I think about valuable element of the plan as long as it's still designed. It's set kind of a little bit, a little bit more than the back of the street.
Well, actually, we said it as close as we could to the street. You're like a ten-foot wide, isn't it?
Okay.
But the front I built is ten feet back from the city right away. Which is, which is behind the sidewalk. But, you know, even that, I don't know whether or not, I may ask them to rescale that too, because that looks like a little further back than the sidewalk. And it's showing.
Under the MUCU zoning, we can't be more than ten feet from the street. It's a ten-foot max.
Okay. And that's the city that we call it right away.
Correct, not the right way.
Right, right. Okay, okay, thanks. And I guess last thing would be whether or not we talked about the town, county, colon, central.
When this group issued a negative declaration for the three projects, sixty-four, sixty-six Colvin and nine forty-four Central Avenue, traffic issue was the main issue that was addressed in that, in that negative declaration. And traffic made a, made a pick in that. They think it may handle would, obviously nothing impact on the environment if, if the traffic plans instituted. They did not say exactly how they would implement the traffic report, left some options open for re-timing, re-timing signals. There's not really a goal for widening any of the pavement at Central and Colvin. It's just, it's just, you know, we don't, we take private property to do it and we're not so sure it would solve many problems. So the, the goal here is to show how this product, this project of the, the one with the least impact on traffic was obviously the self-storage. Self-storage had four or six vehicles a day coming in to pick up stuff or drop off stuff. This is the second most. This, this had a hundred and twenty apartments. But you realize by based upon the affordable apartments and people with disabilities, the number of people driving is significantly less for these hundred and twenty units than with for a hundred and twenty marketing. Right, so, and the, the big project was the, what I was told was the unnamed fast food franchise at the corner in Colvin and Central, which everybody calls Chick-fil-A. So I assume they made an application when they did parent Chick-fil-A. And I, I'm just calling it an unnamed fast food franchise at Colvin and Central. That was the major impact on traffic based upon the number of seats, the drive-throughs and projected traffic. And that did require some mitigation. So the goal was there is how to spread the mitigation. And one, one thing that was not originally recommended in the report, but was added by Dr. Owen as we do, Detroit lid lock crossing here was a good idea. Now, they have crossings at Chantilly Street, which are the lit pipe. But then this comes out that what they want is here with something that's activated when somebody goes use the crosswalk and the light splash, make it more tenable and useful for people. And product might, we put it in our project only because we're coming a little bit ahead of the unnamed fast food franchise project. So you can name it. No, only their name. It's okay, the application name. So Chick-fil-A generates most of the traffic. We're, we're obligated to help with the traffic solution. I'm not so sure at what level.
And our, our original design had the pedestrian crossing, culture for our project to utilize Anthony Street. It was traffic by engineering a group of those that suggested it be placed at the access to Hannaford with the thinking that people are going to take the shortest distance and if they go to Hannaford, that's where they're going to cross. So he was the one that recommended it there. I would also add that someone had raised a concern about curb cuts in those areas. None of the projects are proposing to change the curb cuts that exist at the site. Both your secret review as well as this project, the Army, and my understanding, the Chick-fil-A project, which is forthcoming, all utilize the existing curb cuts. So when Mr. Trudeau made the recommendation to put it where he says it should be placed, he did that upon review of existing curb cuts that will be used. So nothing being changed.
And actually, there's at least one curb cut that will be eliminated in front of where Army Garage, at the garage entrances. That's going to be eliminated. So I haven't, I haven't, I, I haven't taken a look at the latest version of the Chick-fil-A plans, but they're, they're supposed to.
What, which street is that curb cut on, is my Colvin?
Colvin, yeah. You remember where, when you went to Army Garage and you went in for their service? There's a curb cut that, a very wide curb cut that opened up to two service doors. And that came out open and that's not needed anymore. So that will be reduced with, and I think on a, on a latest Chick-fil-A plan will be, will be eliminated.
Are you guys working with the other proposed occupants of that site? And the reason why I'm asking, it's not just the pedestrian's safety. What I, I, I hate to see because just going, not just on Colvin, even a little bit before on Central Avenue. If you're going from Everett Road up towards Central Avenue, just getting in and out of those businesses there is very difficult because of the traffic pattern, the street, and where the lights are and so on and so forth. But I can also see people being, as you said, they are coming down from Central Avenue and going towards Everett Road, wanting to take a right on Colvin Avenue. I'm able to see the right turn down and use that. That space to cut through. And go around.
Cut through Hannaford?
No, before Hannaford, going through the Chick-fil-A parking lot, their parking lot coming down here, now we can see the right on the Colvin. And that's why I asked the question because before with Army Garage, they couldn't do that because of the placement of cars.
Yeah.
But now that's wide open. Exactly, that is a big problem.
I, I, I think we, we intended to, and we asked our traffic designers, take in account what was proposed by Chick-fil-A, but was before Chick-fil-A finished the final site. So my guess is that our, our traffic is all, will address the traffic and so on by Chick-fil-A. Figure out whether or not these changes are accompanied with this, this great.
Yeah, that's one of the things that you suggest because I just, you know, like I said, that intersection, as everyone has said here, that intersection has questionable effects for pedestrians and motorists. And just adding that extra layer of people being patient, whatever the words it is, I just see that being a nice. So that's why I asked the question, whether or not you guys are all speaking to try and mitigate those who are obvious issues.
And, and we are. The, the point, the overall plan that you reviewed is part of the secret sizes. Kind of foretold the possibility of Chick-fil-A. That's what it was designed to, and that was what was analyzed. And that was the traffic information that was provided. Neither Dan nor I represent Chick-fil-A on their application at the corner. But both Dan and I represent the owner of the property where Chick-fil-A is going to be attended, as well as Sino. And Dan also represented the Ramses for the self-storage in the middle. So we have a lot of fingers in the pie, but we just don't represent, but we are in communication.
Yeah, there, there was, there were various reports that were included there, what the individual reports. Stormwater.
Yeah, there's a separate SWIP for sixty-four, for sixty-four Colvin, one for sixty, sixty-four Avenue is already reviewed. And that, that was a system that handled the existing drainage off the primary building. So we picked up a large, large portion of that. And we did nothing to deal with the SWIP regarding Chick-fil-A, other than the fact I'll have to go separate. So that each tenant here, under the lease, will probably be required to maintain it. But the end product is, the owner cannot tuck it. Most who owns the property have the ultimate responsibility to mitigate these regulations. The ETP, oh, oh, to go, oh, oh, to maintain the, the system in conjunction with that. Whoever, you know, even, even if it's fucking thirty, thirty years down the line, the apartments were, then left there exceeded their covenant, uh, proposal. Those who are not the use, the other use still has to maintain that system or you're going back to the property owner. That's clear. We actually have a signature for these systems, which is the property owner is in the SWIP. There's a piece of paper that says he understands the responsibility and file with New York State D.C. So very ultimate arbiters if you aren't getting problems.
I did have a question because some of the things of what were being said by the public were of not being non-responsive, lack of spots and that to the questions of neighborhood association concerns. Have a twofold question there. I know that you guys have a good protection of the situation. And this may, you may have the answer, or maybe somebody from the, one of the previous speakers had been answered. One of the things that we're not discussing, okay, what are the top three concerns related to this project and neighborhood association pads? I just heard not responding to that. So that doesn't really, as a, as a planning, will it ever definitely help me to not really put?
And I wouldn't want to speak to neighborhood association.
Right.
But I do dispute the characterization that we haven't been responsive. We've met with them on a number of occasions. We had an open house at the Westgate Diner where everybody in the neighborhood was invited and a good number of people attended. There have been correspondences, repeat correspondences between the neighborhood association and Sino group. So I don't think it's a fair characterization and say that we're not responsive. There's a difference between getting answers and, and getting answers that you don't like. Getting answers that you don't like isn't being non-responsive, which is just not.
That's not my concern though. I just don't know what the issues are. That's my, that's, that's my question.
I could tell you the issues regardless.
Other than traffic, other than, you know, the traffic.
And the visual impact of the buildings. It was the three, three major ones. Somebody may say another one jumped in there, but the three major ones were traffic, drainage, and the visual impacts of the building. Those were, those were the three issues that jumped out at me at the beginning that we attempted to address and that's impossible.
Yeah, and what they're saying is that my devil for hearing here. What Mr. O'Brien was just putting in front of me, he was saying, the design, I did hear the, the design of construction and environmental impact, which would include traffic, the ongoing operation of the special programs, which we've talked about, we've, we've talked about. And to affect the H, which you just addressed. So then I, I guess the issue here is those of the top three. And it looks like they sent this to you on the July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three letter? That sounds good.
And, and quite honestly, the correct, the comment was made. We received a review letter that emphasized the USDA standards that had to be addressed in this project. A whole lot that USDA standards listed included some things that are already handled. It was, it was sort of a laundry list to tell us, we've got to keep our eyes on meeting all these standards. We roughly sent back a letter, I think it was just hobby or judgment, I forget who was the rest of it, that outlined issue by issue, what we've done to address them. And the same is with the technology. So I, I think from a standpoint of being responsive, technically responsive, we are. When we get questions directed to us by the planning department, there's nothing that is left unaddressed. We've addressed every issue of several of those. We, we had some issues that were handled by Sino. Sino made a good attempt to try to get paper out and talk about the program. The program is, the program listens for veterans, teenagers, people with disabilities, got all three different hypotheses. I, I don't want to speak kind of the program. I'm not a program expert. Sino can have people in here to talk about.
I, I would love to weigh in terms of responsiveness. Some subsequent to Sino's initial interaction with the city, the zone, zoning district classification was changed, the underlying zoning classification was changed. And Sino, I think, not only did they not oppose that change, they redesigned their entire project to comply with the new zoning. Our project complies with the new zoning that was enacted during our review process. So I, I, I think it's unfair to say we've been non-responsive.
Yeah, and the original plan had a hundred and eighty-five units, we're down to a hundred and twenty. By, by cutting down the height of the building and the square foot of the building, we ended up with a hundred and twenty. You know, on parking, we tried to put in less parking than we normally would. It's a matter of having a additional eleven parking. We don't need the one parking spot per unit because we do not think we need it. We don't want to build any more parking. No, we, the maintenance program, other than the fact is, Sino also has a significant maintenance presence on the site. I'm not so sure whether or not I saw that person. I have to believe with all the programs that are there, they will have to have at least one within person representing Sino or the groups doing programming for Sino. But I don't want to, I don't want to commit to that. And the goal there is that they will have a program that functions. Because remember, all the extra funding that was mentioned with their funding to see it becomes restrictive. We just can't get a grant from somebody to provide senior services or, or veteran service, or services for people with disability, then walk away from the responsibility. So I have to lay a whole program.
Yeah, that's about what.
Yeah. So I think there probably is.
And, and I heard that comment from the neighborhood as well. It's a good comment. And we will get information to you and the neighborhood association on, on a proposed management structure to answer those one specific.
That seems to be something that was a reoccurring question. And on the traffic, I am sympathetic to a lot of the concerns spoken about my children, the school nearby there. And it's a race we get there. You know, though, something considered in downtown Washington, Colvin in the cut through mitigates a lot of the traffic that you're larger street. So I think your point about how you're going to cut through, the buses coming and walking and sometimes the buses are not just like one bus. It's like when they're delayed, they're delayed. People trying to pick up their kids, we're going to cut through, you know, to those points. So that's a great point to bring up.
Yeah. My first office was at nineteen Colvin Avenue, sixty years ago. My second office was at forty Colvin Avenue, forty years ago. And then I, I know the bombs there.
Any additional questions?
Can I probably just have a quick question? Just curious, you know, the flooding, I, I also am very familiar. I drive Colvin Avenue every morning to get to the gym. So the, the video that was taken of the flooding that occurs and, you know, I, I appreciate your saying like you're not moving in as much parking as is customary because you don't expect as many people to be driving. Have there been any thoughts given to, like, looking at the, and I realize this may or may not be the scale, but even though there's not as many parking spaces, still a lot of it is the blacktop or concrete. Has there been more thought given to, I don't know what actions would be needed, but to break some of that up and put in more green space so that there is more?
More concrete.
Yeah.
We use forest asphalt. I mean, we, we, I used forest asphalt fifty years ago because anybody could forest asphalt. We use for cacti, which is an easy way to get the drainage and not necessarily by coat, but not having it in all cactus. The site has a variety of different soils, unfortunately. The main area of the site was building ocean in front of it, used to have spring lagging. That was a lake that existed there when we shaved this park. I remember going to Shakers Park when I was five years old in nineteen forty-five, and I saw a spring lake right where that was. Meanwhile, in the interim, they've cut all hillbend with debris and trash and stuff that's very weak and soft. It causes some foundation problems. But meanwhile, all the soil out there, even though the hill behind it on western of ours is all colony sand, which is very forest material, we can forest them all the time. The soil in here is what's called euticus, which is soils that were placed by man consequently, don't have the kind of absorption. I'd love to be everywhere's foresting, but unfortunately it doesn't work there.
Additional?
One other question, uh, if you had mentioned the original crosswalk, I don't remember where you had mentioned it originally was, but then you, you moved it, um, are the recommendations. Just given the variety of concerns and my familiarity, pedestrian safety, all of that, is there the possibility of having two crosswalks so that, you know, there's the folks who are going in and out of the corner, but also?
The, you know, the other one was actually built by the city. It's there. The, the one at Anthony Street, we thought the one on Anthony Street was the only one we needed. The city cannot, they built a beautiful job of putting the crosswalks in at Anthony's. Cole. Meanwhile, we were told, and I, I think the position was still the same, Portugal says, we need to repurpose and wait before they walk. They're not coming out of the entrance and walk back to Anthony Street, then cross over. Guy, I, I call it there. People just don't do that. They're, they're. So essentially, we added a crossroad at exact location, but we don't know where we go. Didn't want to. If, if further review, type of engineering, things are already someplace else, we'll assume we'll be someplace else. And we'll work with Chick-fil-A, you know, workout, a degree of responsibility. This time, yeah. Now, a lot of people in Chick-fil-A are going to park their car in Chick-fil-A and then walk across. It's Coleman Avenue. People that live there are going to walk the crosswalk.
Right.
So it's mainly for, that crossroad is mainly for our use, even though, you know, the, the original traffic report mentioned the issue.
Might be more, a more appropriate question for the, the folks in the neighborhood. For the Upper Washington Avenue Neighborhood Association. The geographic borders for your neighborhood association, that's what's published, what I can easily find online.
Yeah.
With the.
Yeah, or sound. We go up, uh, just shy of, 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 of apartments, through the, around the street. And we go through Central to Washington Avenue. We can have that take to.
Down the office. Go across Washington, the office.
Apparently, yeah, we go a little bit across Washington, and we go down Roughway and say, man. And we take in, well, it's not, but we definitely take, and, and we go right out, right up to our staging, um, to, to. We take in the Morrosterie School on those other streets that are just.
Well, that is a street I'm buying.
And we will be happy, I'm happy to invite the senior services guy to come to, or to give you the contact, or invite him to, uh, everyone. Uh, Mr. Herbert Bird, we, we invite him.
Michael, you're always now available. You know where to reach me.
Well, I would, I would encourage you to focus on these.
Oh, yeah, we're happy to invite whoever wants to come. So. But what we have articulated, I think, pretty well.
But your geographic boundaries are central Washington, north and south.
Uh, central to the north, a little bit beyond Washington to the south, to the west, it's over the middle street, I think, uh, Yard Borough. Up, up to Yard Borough, and to the east, I'm going to say it's probably King Avenue, Kingley.
And we have several folks that have been residents of this particular geography that are here with us tonight. My question is, can you take a few moments to describe the development of the neighborhood over, say, the last twenty, thirty, forty years?
Well, I could do it even more than that because I grew up in that neighborhood. So.
No, I, I, I'm curious. You're, you're including in the neighborhood the, the new student housing, correct?
No.
You're not in the. When, when, when is the last time there was a major housing development at that?
Sixty Coleman. Uh, well, the Alexander, you know, I'll kind of do this. What I, I used to distribute the newsletters to the Alexander because they had a property manager who was really cooperative. And I returned it to him electronically to get it out to the people there. Not too many people in the Alexander fans are here. A senior did. They were probably technically outside of our boundary. The student doors we never touched. Um, and probably the biggest apartment complex has fallen off it, the Tanter Village. Uh, that's been a part of the neighborhood. That's, uh, uh, probably tied. Uh, it was two hundred by. Two hundred and forty-five.
Four years ago.
Oh, that we built, that was up already by nineteen.
Yeah, the nineteen boards.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Yeah, and it's been, I've never been a part of it.
Going on. All right. Sure, Sean.
Thank you. Um, so here's some staff notes. Some of these have been, we've brought up in tonight's discussion, just going through. So as noted, the site plan was a modification or revision of what was previously presented in September. Um, it, it certainly makes the site more auto-centric or focused on, on mobile usage. Um, it's kind of lacking this connection with the street being culled in. Um, and also, as Martin really introduced, placing the structure between the self-storage facility and the parking lot to the rear, where previously was kind of, uh, in front of the building. It kind of gives a less prominent, uh, entrance and doesn't really have as much of a physical variance with the wall facing the street. The proposed parking lot, um, being moved to the, to the back and closer to the park. Um, this is, does represent overall reduction in the previous surface coverage, um, you know, through, through asphalt. So previously, the plan from September was a little over twenty-nine percent permeable, um, and now we're looking at forty-five point six percent permeable. Um, but we would notice that, that looking at the areas that might now be permeable and are they, is it being designed to a way where those areas are actually utilized? Are they being placed in the material areas? Um, so looking beyond just raw numbers there, the proposed crosswalk, um, locations being, you know, verify that with the traffic, um, engineering. And we'd be looking to get more details on that, um, since Dan had alluded to in terms of, we're going to want flash and weekends or anything like that. Um, we're looking for the updates to be provided by the applicant on the soil testing and, um, test bits. They noted in the geotechnical report, um, and along with that, just trying to get a sense of how much the geotechnical report is, um, is determining where the building's being placed, if that's why the building is moved, if this is a cost efficiency, or if there's another uh, main reason for, for that change. Um. We are happy to see the proposed connection from the property to the walkway, um, along Anthony to the park, which is something that, um, staff in the planning board previously asked for. Um, in terms of the, um, the buildings designed specifically, when you're looking at the elevation plans, they seem to compromise some of the architectural features of the building. Previously, we had a building that had more projections and recesses along the side of the building, and it's quite a long building in those directions. Um, the new proposal is pretty flat. There's not much, um, particularization made between the different, um, elements of the building. So you kind of almost get, get lost in it when you're looking at it. Uh, we would like to see more information as well on the materials. It's a lot of people have noted. Um, you know, in addition to that, I'd say there are other, um, energy reasons and measures that are being utilized in this project that weren't, um, noted in the site plan. Um. The USDA calls for a minimum of ten percent of the lot area, um, well, for indoor or active, passive or act, passive or active indoor/outdoor recreation space to be provided, and that's the equal to the minimum of ten percent of the lot area, which is just shy of sixteen thousand square feet in this case. Um, the current plan is, uh, it's not on the table for instance yet, but it's showing about two thousand square feet or so. So we'd like to see more information concerning how they intend to provide additional amenities. Um, with that, there is a play area that's shown on the plans. We certainly don't see more detail on that. Um, questions about the choice of location, because we are going, it's essentially right next to parking lot. Um, and are there ways, if the building is being, if we could provide the parking on the other side, except for additional recreation space on the exterior? Um, technical note, just identifying where the snow storage locations would be. Um. And in regards to the parking, um, we're happy to see that there was, including in the time of two EV parking spaces and fourteen EV-ready parking spaces. Um, we, we always love to see more, so we, we are curious how that number was arrived at. We're looking at the total parking that's being provided, which is a hundred and one spaces as proposed. That means EV-ready or EV charging stations, we're only at sixty, sixty percent of the parking spaces. Um, we certainly imagine that, that's something that's going to be more common. Um. And, you know, that's not known or known here, but also that was mentioned tonight, the, the number of parking. Um, the applicant feels that there is a need for the hundred and one parking spaces, um, probably not, not needed to be provided on the site plan. There's certainly, um, under the code, there is, um, requirement of one parking space per dwelling unit. But there's also reductions that can be applied, twenty percent, um, for rental housing, twenty percent for proximity to transit. Um, so we should consider those in this application as well. Um, two notes pertaining to the uses specifically, we'd like more information on the types of services and programs that are going to be available here. Um, whether it be intended specifically for the tenants of this location only, or whether we're not tenants here, be, to be coming here to, um, uh, to receive treatment services. And then, um, the applicant had previously stated, um, different housing populations that would be served by this, so we just like the, the numbers and breakdown. Specifically so that we can, um, have a better sense of how to properly design the site around those populations. Um, just being mindful that the city does not have, we don't have any purview of the type of people, um, you know, seniors, um, low income, but when it comes to trying to design space with certain people or populations.
Well, that might be described as people visiting or serving first, people living there, the whole of the group and out.
Yeah.
So.
I'd have to very hard to remember.
That, that would be hard to figure.
Yeah. The staff comments, or if there's, uh, recommended actions. No actions tonight, um, we've had um, a good discussion of this, certainly information that staff could provide, followed by a question that we might have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is. Next slide is the development plan, two oh two, two oh four, demolition review. For one twenty-four, one twenty-three, Henry Johnson. Two thirty-eight, two forty-one, two forty-two, two forty-eight, two fifty, First Street, nine, one eighty, three three one, three three three, and three three seven, put that. Home leasing, the developer associates. First parents' proposal is to destroy, the destruction of forty-two thousand, we had to ten hundred and three square foot, two square foot, thirty-three, twelve units. Two thousand five hundred fifty square feet of general retail space at the corner of Henry Johnson. And first construction of five townhouses with two joint facilities each, along Henry Johnson, demolition of an existing building that K couldn't add, and construction of four townhouses, three, well, she has this in development plan review, review, demolition review, and additional needs. Action or consideration, please let. First and parents, yeah, two minutes, thank you.
Thank you so much. My name is Kelsey Carr. I'm the developer and chair of the project with the Bella Associates. I'm joined this evening by Adam Driscoll and Jen Higgins with Home Leasing, as well as Brian Dion with SWB Architects. I'm going to turn it over to Adam for a quick.
Thank you. Um, Adam Driscoll from Home Leasing. I will go really fast. We have a lot of properties to, to cover. Um, I just wanted to say thank you to the board for considering our application tonight. Um, just a quick, uh, description of home leasing. Um, we are a, we have three teams that compromise the size of, uh, at home leasing. We have a development team, our own construction team, uh, general contractor, as well as our property management team, who, um, for all of our communities, we manage all of our own properties. Um, we have approximately thirty communities and, uh, roughly, uh, three thousand units across New York State. Um, our main office is located in Rochester. However, we do have a leasing office here in Albany with seven employees, along with a construction, uh, office with roughly, uh, five employees here in Albany as well. Um. We have been, uh, part of the Arbor Hill neighborhood, uh, to teach our ownership of seventy distressed roll homes in two thousand seventeen. Employee rehab the buildings, um, and it may open, um, at least, yeah, two hundred and ten, um, apartments. We are also under construction with the second phase that, uh, the Long Zaken Church located at one sixty-three Clinton, formerly a school. Uh, four distressed roll homes and a new construction of thirty-six units above, uh, first floor of twelve thousand square feet of retail commercial on that will be occupied by our partner, um, basis, provide, uh, provide, uh, office and retail space for interview business. Um. We were fortunate enough to be selected by the Albany County Land Base and Albany Community Development Agency. Um, with the RFP that they have released, uh, for the main corridor, which, uh, Kelsey was talking about, in between, um, First Street and Clinton, uh, Henry Johnson. Um, and we have been communicating as we've been going through the design, um, process with local stakeholders and, uh, folks from the neighborhood. And I've also held, um, meetings and, uh, neighborhoods, while during the time, as well as providing email updates periodically. So with that said, um, I'll pass it back to Kelsey to, let's say, to the, uh, the, the site plans, because I would not, the, the, the.
Thank you. Um, so this project is an inbuilt redevelopment of thirty separate parcels located within the Arbor Hill and West Hill neighborhoods. Of those parcels, twenty-six of them are vacant sites without a building. Three have existing structures that will be renovated, and one structure, an existing dry cleaner at one eighty plant app will be demolished. Um, so the redevelopment involves three major development plans that are subject to review by this board, uh, which include a new thirty-eight unit mixed-use building. Uh, which include a new thirty eight unit mixed use building at the corner of First Street and Henry Johnson Boulevard, across the street from the public library. A new ten unit townhouse building at the opposite side of Henry Johnson Boulevard, as well as a new twelve unit townhouse building at one eighty plant app. And we also just want to give you context, there is additional parcels that are involved in broader projects that are subject to administrative review by the chief planning official. Um, so those include um three, three unit townhouse building at seventy two Clinton Ave, two thirty three Clinton Ave. Three twenty five, three twenty seven, three thirty one, and three thirty three Clinton Ave. As well as a new two story, two unit attached dwelling at two forty one first street. And then there are the three renovations of three, um, an existing three unit townhouse at one twenty three Hundred Dollar Boulevard. And existing two unit townhouse at two forty three first street and an existing two unit townhouse at three thirty seven Clinton Ave. So that is the overall project, which does include in the end eighty seven residential units, which will be affordable. So the first main site is the mixed use development, and so this is an existing vacant site. We will be providing a new four story mixed use building um that'll have frontage on both first street and Henry Johnson Boulevard. It will provide thirty eight residential units, as well as two thousand five hundred and fifty square feet of commercial space. There will also be site improvements that will include a small public park, pocket park at the corner of Hundred thousand Boulevard. And so this will highlight an existing mural that was dated on the side of three thirty seven Clinton Ave. And if you guys are familiar with that intersection, it pays tribute to World War One hero, um, William Henry Johnson and the three sixty nine infantry. And so part of the renovation of three thirty six, three thirty seven Clinton Ave, that mural will be restored so that I can live on in the street. So as part of that development, we will be providing fourteen off-street parking spaces. Where fifteen spaces are required after you apply the shared use, the proximity to transit, affordable housing and on-street parking adjustments. Um, it's also important to know that there are seven on-street parking spaces along the first street frontage. And so this will include one acceptable parking space as required by the code, in addition to one designated EV charging space. Um, there will also be two. All right, more than two actual bike parking storage within the building. So the property is currently split between two zoning districts, the MSDU district along um Henry Johnson Boulevard and First Street. And the MU NE district along Plain Ave. Um, so as designed, this development is fully compliant with the bulk zoning requirements for step back, lot standard, and building height for those two districts. I'm actually going to turn it over. Yeah, I'm just going to turn it over to Brian to go through the architect.
Hi, uh, Brian Dion, the SWB here. Um, so taking a look at the design of the building, all of the mixed use building that uh that's discussing. So on the, the lot would be first street, um, working down Henry Johnson towards. Trying to address the different scales of the neighborhoods and understanding that this is sort of a gateway into city of Albany. So highlighting the first street corner as you come into the city with a four story portion of the building. Then stepping down to the the shorter scale, uh, different stories. Part of mine of the brown house. Highlighting the entry with this warmer wood book material and signage. Highlight entry of the building. And this is along first street. So again, the larger scale, uh, speaking with the public library across the street. Uh, so the view looking down Henry Johnson towards Clinton Ave and highlighting that that corner as you are into the city. Highlighting that the entry gate into the city. Uh, I mean, view looking back up Henry Johnson. You see the the building stepping down, being more toward to the scale of the neighborhood and creating that pocket park and restoring the the mural. Let's see, uh, the floor plans, uh, yes, thirty eight units of the upper floors has one and two bedroom units. And on first floor, the orange spaces would be the commercial spaces on corners. Uh, there's also a community room for the residents to gather and have events. And as you actually be an office, it's your resident home. You can pick up your mail and everything and move to your. Four units of the first.
Um, so as we noted this, um, this site does require a conditional use permit for the portion of the retail space that falls within the MU NE district. So it's roughly six hundred and thirty square feet of that second space along Henry Johnson Boulevard. Um, so right now, the. The proposed use isn't fully determined at this time, but we are looking at uses that will be compliant to the neighborhood or, yeah, complement the neighborhood. Um, so things along the lines of medical, daycare, coffee shop, or light food operations are being considered. Um, and but we do not anticipate that this small retail space negatively impact the neighborhood in any way. Um, that just shows me where the split zone is. There's only a portion of that lower retail space is in that zone. So the next site is the Hundred thousand Boulevard Townhomes. This is also an existing vacant site where um former buildings have previously been demolished. And they will be, they'll be replaced with a three story, ten unit townhouse building. There will be sixteen um off-street parking spaces provided. Um, currently, the city code does not require any parking for that townhouse unit. Um, but we will be providing off-street parking for our tenants, and that will include one or a couple of states, as well as one designated EV charging space. Um, similarly, you know, as designed, this development is fully compliant with the zoning requirements of the code.
So looking at the the sign that is taking use from the the row houses within the neighborhood. Any of the strong corners on top, a window on one side, um, and that. Uh, shared entry for the the units. Uh, looking at the rear, we have access from the rear as well. So uh residents can park and then just go directly into their units and some quarter portions on the side. Here's a look down uh Henry Johnson, across from the mixed use building. Uh, so kind of taking some cues from that and. Use the the language of the the neighborhood of us and. Complying the the neighborhood. So the uh one bedroom units on first floor, access from both the front and rear. Three bedroom units, um, the second, third floors, get access from both the.
And the third site is one eighty Clinton Avenue. Um, as we said, this is the only site where an existing building is proposed to be demolished. Um, in this case, the structure was built sometime around nineteen fifty five and was most recently a dry cleaner. Um, and that use and the building style is dot conducive to conversion to residential. Um, additionally, the existing structure does not match the aesthetic of the adjacent row houses in this area. Um, so we're trying to build something that will complement the neighborhood. Um, this site was also.
Okay. It is closed at the time, yeah.
Um, this site was also just amended for the brown filled cleanup program to address historic use of hazardous materials of property. Um, in alignment with the requirements for demolition, there will be a demolition debris diversion plan. That will be implemented to meet the thirty five percent requirement. Um, and the existing building will then be replaced with a three story, twelve unit townhouse building. Off-street parking is not required and will not be provided, um, and that's consistent with the similar units in the area. Um, but as designed, the the proposed development will be fully compliant with the bulk zoning requirements for step back, lot standard, and building height.
Um, so design again more of the same, fitting the neighborhood, complying the adjacent buildings. Uh, creating that that row house language at the next street front. Um, and since neighborhood. I think the rear elevation.
There's no rear exit, right?
Yes, there is. There's a, there's a alley back there.
Yeah, no, but isn't it like rolling down jacket show down the hill by the barn?
No. There's an actual alley right behind those row houses on that side of the street, access that you saw. You can take the left depending on if you're coming up in or down. You go right into the back. If I can get around it back there for the um row houses, so they can do parking.
They're just outdoors like that, so.
Right. But there is access to the alley back there. We don't intend to have parking. People have garage back there.
Uh, this will be three unit. From a process. Set three unit.
Just a quick summary. So overall, the building units, we will be providing twenty four one bedroom, forty two bedroom, and twenty three three bedroom. For total eighty seven units across all the properties. Um, there will be two thousand five hundred fifty square feet of commercial space in the two spaces of the next two buildings. We are anticipating a construction duration of approximately thirteen months. We did have a neighborhood meeting back in September where we got some really great feedback. Um, and some of the funding sources that we will be speaking are through HCR and HFA, through the four percent funding program. Um, and we're here tonight seeking declaration of lead agency for seeker. Tonight, we'll turn it over for questions.
Any public comments on this one?
We'd have one person.
Welcome. Please state your name and address.
My name is Charlie Robinson and my. Family, um, we bought this one nine floor Clinton Avenue for the year twenty nine years. And purchased it um twenty nine years ago for me and my daughter and um mom. And raised my other two children, my husband and I. And I also own and purchased Peter Joy's block. Um, one ninety six and one ninety eight separately, which is separately being currently destroyed. Um, by the um plan of home leasing. Um, I've seen this place for my home. This um plan seems to represent in a letter that I got with demolition of only one property in that one eighty. Um, Clinton Avenue is the former for the tail around it, looks like it's still operating. Um, right now, maybe I'm in different understanding of my mind. But uh, that is literally five stories away from my residence. And we said that there are parking derbies behind there and not. There was a service mound.
And then it go like that far?
No, it doesn't go over the ready that is immediately situated to the one eighty. Um, Clinton Avenue location happens to be an eighty something year old, it's lived here. And I'm very privileged as well as the community. This is from Tom, um, Tom. And um, and um, I was paying here and I'm struggling to be here. Because on June twenty third, I've been speaking with the city council, I don't care. In pleading with the city not to demolish my home. And home as in displaced by the home leasing project, even when they did base one, when they acquired. The other properties like mine that I bought from the last developer of the eighties. Um, in its state, as a stakeholder speaking to um support development, which I fully support. And I can develop this, I actually purchased the home there in the home. What I'm seeing now, but what I've been disenfranchised from is the space. Um, the city abolished my home with its entire content. And um, among other many things that um honestly is a great shame. For um where my home was after they um posted my house. In the middle of COVID while this contract of home leasing was flourishing. And I, I almost died during COVID. I was displaced from my home. But we would be intent for the city to buy and demolish my home. And then deprive me of it. And now I'm facing a six years old morrow who basically gone. Facing um financial housing, life insecurity. And this project, um, only being a public benefit corporation, which means they don't just do good things. And they are seeking to do this project, and they did base one of the projects with public money. Not with with their, or leveraging their wealth, or their resources as a family owned. Public benefit corporation operating for profit. Because they're um saying that they're presenting affordable housing. It is not affordable housing. It is not the neighborhood that I'm investing in. And I don't see anybody here that looks too much like me and the people that I've lived around. Who there and obviously for almost thirty years, most of the time that I settled, transferred, whatever it was. Having done so, pursued my higher education career instead. Because I actually became a mom and. But my life has been radically impacted by this project. Phase already completed, and I even look at some of those houses, they're already starting to show evidence of this is here. Um, I believe the city formally demolished my house. There's no reference to it. It literally finds where I believe. Right now, the um construction equipment for the Bella Associates. It's for one of their contracts that's sitting on my private property, which has been destroyed. My home, which is separately beaded. It's spread over one ninety six and one ninety eight Clinton Avenue. Right now. And all of this is in after. Um, me, I I see the plans to just replace it. I don't necessarily, from my perspective, for the black woman, it works. The plans and gentrification. But I see the need for for change, and I know it's like now, and he goes. A corridor of Albany, and I know Henry Johnson is a corridor of Albany. They tore down a building by Henry Johnson. That they've been trying to do for thirty years, since um just before they demolished my home. Without notice, after crying out to everyone else, the government office. Please help me. I'm a different people. Financially distressed person with a home that I have sought help, painted the very same building. And asks for help with the sign that posted outside for homeowners who have properties that have concerns. When they, the last developer um took down the house that was on one ninety six and one ninety eight Clinton Avenue. They left speed with a a wall and a foundation. For row houses that were built to perform in the John Hughes. I'm not an architect or engineer or anything, but. What I experienced, I mean, thought of your investment, it's something. It's like we had an improvement when I was more able than I am today. Um, what's left of the home in distress. Now, not just. Without a home in distress, without, you know, we've missed. So I was there and I wanted to go on record.
You may submit, you should submit your concerns in writing. There will be additional opportunities to speak. On the project, if you so choose, we encourage you to participate in the public process. We're well exhausted with three minutes of it. It's okay. Um, but I did want to draw your attention to it. Thank you very much. We heard you, and we will continue with the meeting. Are there? We heard you and we will continue with the meeting. Are there any other? Speakers on the project?
I know I'm situated right up in the middle of the project. That's why my house is no longer standing. And I'm concerned about my other property.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board or even the public?
Um.
Is that you applicant?
It's, it's for the applicant. I would, I, I, I would, I would kindly suggest. So. What's the word I want to say? Um, to be fully transparent. I was a one fifty-two and a half looking at it. That really across the street from the church that you're done, that you're, that you're renovating now. Um, smack down in the middle of a lot of the home leasing. Also, I own property, may get named at, um, one night, um. One twenty-nine and a half Clinton Avenue, which is right next door to one of the buildings that, um, that, um, home leasing. Has renovated now between, um, closer to, um. The church. Um, and that part of Clinton Avenue. So just for transparency sake, I, I am the neighbor. I am the resident. I'm neighbors to some of your tenants and a lot of what we're showing, um. When you're speaking of our issues that I've tried to do on leasing since day one. Um, if. I would encourage you to speak with her about what's on her property. Because I will be honest, what she's saying happened two weeks. Where I had to kick home leasing off of my land after doing extensive damage to it. And so, um, with heavy equipment. Things of that nature. Um, that was at the beginning of the project. Luckily, I called it as soon as it's happened. And I had conversations and I haven't had that happen again. But you guys are truly on the phone. And it's very easy to go on the computer and see who did it, what lane. Don't assume it's because they get locked, that it's not owned by somebody. To figure out who, who owns it and speak with them. Um, I also represent, um, our community development center. They also have, have, um, creative development agency. They've had problems as well. So the problems that she's speaking of are not anything new. I know it's both of them beyond this meeting, but I do want to make sure that you guys are aware that they're having. And I'm pretty sure in labor meetings, you guys are thinking of your, of your, of your, of your, of your, it's not funny game. So my hope is, um, with these, I do have questions about density. Because you're adding eighty-seven units. Um, you're adding a whole lot onto, I'm going to switch over to now the project. Um, um, Henry Johnson, right out here, you're adding new buildings with some like in the back permanent space. What are you going to do about parking? Because one of the issues with Henry Johnson is people will run into the store, they'll double park. Henry Johnson at State does not have parking spaces for, they don't have curb where you can go to the side to actually park. It's all street. So how are you going to alleviate that? How is that going to affect the traffic on Henry Johnson's, the major thoroughfare? Especially, you know, during the peak hours. Where people who work for the state utilize this, um, street to get onto the highway. And vice versa. But like we have more about, about both parking concerns and the traffic concerns.
Would it be okay if I just went back to the first part of the transparency and I apologize for what? Um, happened with us doing, I'm assuming doing construction next to your building. Um, I was not aware of that. Um, but for Mrs. Robinson, um. Oh, this, this Robinson, sorry. Um. This was something that I, we had, uh, been contacted, um, through governor's office. And it wasn't, I, from what, we didn't, we don't own the property. We weren't working on the property. We, I'm, I'll, I'll be happy to talk to, uh, Miss Robinson. But from what we understood, it was a misunderstanding that we were involved. And I, I, again, we have been reached out, hey, was this your property? We said, we don't own one ninety-four.
I, I don't think that that's what I heard. I heard that there's kind of the large equipment on her property. Which equates to trespassing if you don't have ownership. That's what I heard. And Miss Robinson might want to say that.
And I would refer to home leasing, but home leasing, the city of Albany.
Yeah, we hear anything about demolishes or anything. But the fact that you put in on your house, uh, you put in on them.
And when they first did their survey, he was pointing to page one project, that becomes seventeen. They, um. They surveyed my property.
And there's currently equipment?
They surveyed all of the properties. It was from the beginning, your plan to acquire, even privately, one property. Especially going down there, seeing what you probably had to, or feel the possible threat.
What, what I would like for this meeting, questions are directed to the applicant. Responses will be between board members and the applicant. Responses will be between board members and public. But we cannot have back and forth discourse between the applicant and the public. So if there's a conversation of these that happen between the applicant and the public, that will happen outside of the confines of this thing. Thank you.
We're acknowledging, um, insert H R C.
Um, we have, uh, this was our, this is our. Um, but in regards to the parking, um, we feel with regards to, um. The parking behind the multifamily as well as parking behind, um, the row homes. And the on-street parking available on First Street would be sufficient.
For the business, even for the businesses. Not just for the resident. I, for residents, I think so. But now you're adding the businesses, which would be. An, an additional layer. And those businesses can be anything from what you guys described, because I would be able to plan yet. It could be something like a logermet. Or it could be something as a small convenience store, you know, a coffee shop that was what you described too. All of those things requiring people to exit their vehicle to be there for. You know, depending on the business, fifteen minutes to a couple of hours. So that means that if they park in the back, as you, as you have described it.
Right.
That means that residents don't have to park. And I'm, you know, with this neighborhood, the habitant, the convenience store, the habitant is that, oh, I'm going in for two seconds. So I'm going to double park my car, run in, and care about what the traffic behind it. So that, that's just the neighborhood. And so. Keeping those things in mind and making, you know, helping to direct or whatever. There's only so much you can do, I understand that. But it's very important to keep in mind those type of unique things that happen in this area. It's a great point. The other concern I have is that you're having eighty-seven units within a one block, one to two block span. So you're going from here, Henry Johnson, having a whole bunch of row houses here, you're heading down Clinton Avenue. Down towards, um, Swan Street. So that's about, depending on what side of the street you're on, two, 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 one, two degree block radius. Eighty-seven units times two, that means you're putting a minimum of a hundred and sixty-some people. Within two lot radius. And there's no bill provisions for, for parking. When we're already feeding the street parking and the residents are already struggling. That's been a constant concern. Um, I hear the parking on, on, um, the boulevard, which is great, but not so much I'm putting out of it. You're just already going to make the, the issues that we're dealing with even more, uh, even a bigger issue. So I guess the question is, how is that I'm trying to come back then? Is that in your plan at all?
Well. Um, yes, so maybe part of it would be the parking lots provided for. With the forty-eight, um, forty-eight of the units that are with the, up at the corner. And as they go down, um, there's, it, it, there are no driveways for any of the, um. Um, the, the buildings that will be renovating, um, and then also, um, the vacant blocks will be used for. What was, uh, at one time, a lot on there as well. So, um. With, it would, it would just be like with everybody else in the neighborhood, having to park on, on the street. There are, there's no other options for, for driveway.
Um, but it's interesting, and how do you hear that?
And you must be able to provide for a. Curb cut next to. If it's, if it's going to benefit that property, the curb cut, so you can, if you wanted to. I know that that's not me apparently. I, I, I kindly suggest. Because again, neighborhood issue, people do have curb cuts, they feel like giving school parking there. And they get mad when out of touch. That, that happens. Yes.
I, I don't disagree, um. We were trying to respect the, 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 the fabric of the neighborhood we designed and, and. Just constraint with that word. Have sent it to us, um.
That's something for you guys to think about.
Yeah, no, no.
But I'm just saying, as, as a resident, these are the things. You know, not just on a plane, but over all select residents, these are the issues that have arisen. During this process, last period.
Yeah, no, I, I, I completely hear you. Um, one of the things. I've heard over the years with, with the partners and neighborhoods who are working in the areas. Um, parking seems to be, um. Not as much available during the day when there's, um, office.
Yeah, the street workers don't want to pay and to go to that parking street. And that, that's a whole different problem in and of itself.
But it also creates a problem for. Folks that live on Clinton or for us as. Some of the developers, because that parking technically shouldn't, for residents as opposed to, um, employees walking. Three blocks, four blocks away to a. And what we've also heard is when, when it's not during those peak office hours, parking is, it's. More valuable than not. From what we've heard. And heard, and heard, heard both, I should say. We've heard parking is a problem. We've heard parking is not a problem if there wasn't any. Um, non-resident parking.
It's, it's an issue, but something I would, I would keep in mind. Um, I, I, I said that question.
I just had a quick question. Um. Particularly. As you know. Um, I think the intent is that the fire truck can fall into the parking aisle, both the Henry Johnson, um. Town home as well as the next two site. But in this area, it's typical that the truck would pull on the street. And one thing that I'm learning, um, is that there's, there's two kinds of funding for. You don't start the application process until it's been approved, right?
Um. You can, um, for both, you can actually submit without having local approvals, um. For, for this, um, for this, uh. Uh, project will be submitted in a month or so. A concept application just to get into their queue. Uh, so it's not that you have to have.
And you're, you're, you're working for.
Yes.
More just like comments and questions. And. Speaking purely from a personal perspective, um, many years ago, many careers ago, um. I did direct services to folks who were homeless and housing insecure and spent a lot of time in a Clinton Avenue neighborhood. And, um, you know, thinking about what Mr. Robinson shared, just kind of acknowledging. The two of you look a lot more like me, um, than you do like the folks that live in that neighborhood, um, and. I'm very aware of that. As somebody who spent a lot of time in that neighborhood and was aware that my experience is. How I moved to your world, very different. So I know you said that you met with local stakeholders in the planning process. And I guess. I would just encourage you really strongly to keep engaging with local stakeholders because. From my own experience, you know, as somebody who comes into a neighborhood where you don't necessarily represent the majority of people. Being really mindful of assumptions that are made or, um, even just. Ways that you, you think something should be done. I think the, the more opportunities to engage the public and the community that has lived there. Um, you know, Mr. Robinson said, you know, acknowledge gentrification and not, not supporting gentrification and. And so how do we make sure that as development is happening, and in some places certainly maybe it needs to, maybe it doesn't. But making sure that the folks who already live in that neighborhood are really, really involved in the conversation so that as we're. Building hopefully nicer, affordable, you know, wonderful housing, that it really is going to meet the needs and, and feel appropriate to the folks that are already living.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and. Having started on, um, the seventy row home initially. We, um, we didn't do as good of a job as we should have. In, um, um, but we did start a relationship with, um, Brenda Robinson. And we, we have been working and meeting with her as of, actually, I think last week. Um, keeping, um, our name away and Brenda Robinson and, um, um. Been communicating with the Metropolitan Baptist Church and as many, please spread the word to, to as many, um. Um, neighbors as possible. And from phase, from phase one, phase two. We think we improved. We're trying to be that much better now. Um, we're not perfect by any means. Where would we, um, and with regards to gentrification, um, these, um, homes, apartment homes. Will be from thirty percent to seventy-five percent roughly A M I. So, and when we did, when we did phase one. We were super cognizant and sensitive to. Again, we weren't perfect, but these properties were in dire, going to foreclosure. And who knows what would happen. There were approximately eighty residents living there. And we put a relocation team together. We met with residents continually. Again, I, I weren't trying, we weren't perfect. We tried to bring as many residents back to a brand new apartment. As compared to what they had been living in, and it sounded like it was just not right. Um. But yes, we're, we're, we, we try to, we're very transparent. Um, and we have a leasing office on Clinton Avenue. And, um. If there's issues, which there are, it's, 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 you know, it's, it's tough, um, with. Two hundred and ten parks, it's tough, um, to be. Uh, having a, working properly. We're there. So, uh, home leasing is, is managing the, the, the leasing and so it's, we can. Come to kill us. Or tell us the problems and we're gonna, we're gonna drive and. Do that, or do our, our, our.
Any additional questions? All right. Steph.
So the recommended action is to declare lead agency, um, planning board. As I touched on, H R C is an involvement interest agency as well as other funding, um, and Shippo, it's very archaeological and historic district. Um, for the purpose of the seeker, as Sophie mentioned, the renovations are included in the overall project. Um, you know, we own a segment, the environmental impact. That also we use as a swift or storm monitoring prevention plan if required. Um, we're also just the water and sort of engineering supports will be required and potentially case one A and. On this first meeting, this is the first step. So that's.
Thank you. On the, who, who was a quick answer right here, is my eighty?
Yeah. One eighty.
Go to the next slide. That's one.
This one?
Yep. That's the back of the building, right?
Yeah.
There, yes, your question, was it interaction? Yes, there, there is none, there is not. So that one, you don't have to be fire escapes coming out of that, it was something. What are the waves of degress?
Village for emergency, emergency evacuation in the case of.
If there's, if there's a fire. That front on the top floor of one of these. The, the windows.
My windows in the back, if I go out from simple, I'm not. It's on the hill, so with my flat land back there, it's twenty-three down and Sheridan.
The fire department has received, um, these land suits, so just call that to their attention.
And will they have backyards?
Um.
Since there's no parking, they will, they have to have.
That's what we can, we prepare to what space would be available. And, um, and just as not a, addressing that question, but they are sprinkled, um, just to put that up, they would be sprinkled. And one thing that wouldn't mention for all the, um, apartment ones is that they, um, it would be all electric.
Oh, that's the new standard.
Alright, so we'll have interesting conversations. Is there a motion to declare the board as the agency for a secret? So move, there's a. Has been moved by army and set by Rachel to. Declare the planning board as the agency for a secret. There any questions for the motion? Saying done?
You don't see my answer?
You're not a member of board.
Well, I have a question concerning what.
Environmental quality review act. State. Environmental quality review act.
Point of differentation, can you clarify what that means for the little person?
That, that means that the board as agency and. That the members of the planning board staff will determine. The environmental viability of the changes that are being proposed by the project. If you are able to be a surgeon. It's as easy Q R A.
For like just here. You know, people in here, there is a part of the board or of the profession. And to ignore my vague feelings.
We're not ignoring here, you are out of order. You are not a member of the planning board, we took all the comment and question. Now it's time for the board to act, it's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Those are the votes now. Motion carry. If there are additional questions for the public, we can change those after the meeting. And probably before then. But there are rules of procedure that we should follow for the team marketing. Thank everybody for helping us accomplish that. Next item on the agenda. Two fifty-seven, this is our pearl, do you have a presentation? Or is this all an internal assessment?
So we're not taking any public comment, okay?
There's no public comment on this, see this internal comments, almost like an old school meeting.
Really agree, overview, I think it's very important, the ratio of shot even be brought up speaking on it. So, so the, the project under consideration is, um, technically rescue mission. Could be a, uh, a new building, uh, addition to their existing facility. South Pearl Street is approximately, uh, three, thirty thousand square feet. And four stories, uh, involve housing and number of other ancillary uses, as sure you're aware of. Looking at some of the documents associated with the application. Um, the phase that we're at now in case of this project, we, a board took the staff behind, um, the declarations. Under the state environment quality review act with respect to the fact that the project. Uh, may have a, uh, significant impacts on the environment. Say particularly the potential impact on human character, uh, historic and archaeological resources. Um, that was some months ago, I don't have the date in front of me, but I want to say it was between nine months, a year ago, the action statement. Um, because that action statement, the, uh, project sponsor, the applicant required to compare. Uh, draft environment with that statement for consideration of the word. Um, that draft environment with that statement is based upon the final scope, which was. Uh, we were presented draft scope by the applicant. Um, the board, uh, expanded upon that scope, initiative by our scope, which sets forth the terms that the applicant needs to look at. Uh, in the, in the environment with that statement document. Um, they have provided us with that document as of. By October eleventh, um, so what we have at this point, we have forty-five days to. Uh, review and determine whether or not that is complete and ready for public review. Um, and we've involved and provided a hard copy as well as additional copy of that. Uh, I have reviewed the document and prepared, uh, a list of what I believe are some deficiencies with that document. Um, I think the board, in addition to, uh, discussing this, um, certainly mind on your opinions. Whether or not I think that's ready for public review, uh, you know, I think you need to make a distinction between. Uh, you know, something that's. Even least and something that a, has been, where to add the answer to. Um, but it's clear to me that there are certain questions, I mean, some cases, plans and the doctor, in the case of not. Um, the applicants didn't respond to some of the inquiries that were in the final scope. Um, and in other cases, the, the answers were, uh, partial responses or not fully. Uh, respond to the content, um, in the format, according to requesting. Um, some, some general comments that, that I saw, it's, um, it's very difficult to review in some cases. It's sites, the sections, the, the section three, two, that for the scope, there's really no, uh. Content or text carry on the scope. Uh, there's a lot of cross references with the documents, it's a general thing, but I think we form anything that would. Uh, we need some more than label document, but it's all considered. Um, and then there's just, uh, that provides a list of things that I didn't feel we're at, but we addressed, um. So the board's, um, decision tonight is, you know, whether to accept the document as incomplete. And to do it with, um. Uh, a public review process, that'd be, would have to be a minimum of six days, um. Public hearing, I believe it's optional, but that's something that I would encourage the board. Or if the board determines that, um, the submission was inadequate, not ready for public review. Uh, they need to have the ambulance disease and, um, have the applicant essentially. Recent product, uh, to supplement the decent prior response to this particular deficiency. Again, that's my opinion with respect to the kitchen day, of course, to discuss amongst yourselves.
So. My question is, with this list that you have here, am I assuming that you have not gone to them with this list of deficiencies as of yet? I know that you asked for clarification and what you got, but not sufficient, led to this list. But has this specific list been provided to them? And as a.
And now this determination is. Specific, unfortunate. Responded with that, you know, in practice. But we did, I think, you know, with respect, we provided them a scope of all the information we were requesting for. Um, and they did provide us with a very lengthy document which answered, right, some of that. But there were some questions that just were not directly addressed.
The two options are to accept. Public period or ask for extension for review for other.
Uh, we, yeah, we would either accept or respect, except we really need one instead of public hearing date, that term for the public review of the document. Um, to not accept would be to, uh, send it back to them to.
Rachel, any questions? I'm trying to give everybody else a chance, um, before I do, that's all.
I mean. I guess my question is, as, as a newer person to this process, is there any harm, if there is information that we feel like. We'd like more information, is there harm in sending it back and asking for more information?
No, that, that's, I think our obligation and, and. Under the secret provision, we only have forty-five days to do that, to the track, not over the left, that is. Yeah, and, and I, I agree, I think looking, looking through and at this place, it's more detailed and warranted, also answering the issues raised. And, um. I had one additional point, uh, this is our one, one chance to ask for it, if one of them, maybe we can go back and add to the list of efficiency. There's still an expectation that they're gonna respond, or gonna maybe respond to the efficiency, but. They can't, we did this today.
So I see this one, we share it. So, um. Have a set through those, and we heard. His conversations from, um, the applicant, what the surrounding, the neighbors and that community. That's the, um, the applicant that was really passionate about the project, they. We, we went to the city, we went to the board, to the mall party, to all. We brought every guy across, so you know this one, so I don't, I would prefer. Would entertain a motion with the board that we, um, supply the, the list of the staff. The planning staff has provided to us, that to the applicant, and, you know, try to explain. So the motion? There's a. Second, they're moving probably saying to provide even. A fuller list of planning staff to the applicant for the draft environment, that statement for. Two fifty-seven, south. On the, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I, I think we need to make a, we need to state the motion, my opponent, that, that is. It's a D S, yeah, that it's available to be complete and, and I put the public to review. And then we should take a motion.
Is there a motion to declare the draft? Environmental impact statement as incomplete and inadequate for public view? Some moves, there's a. Second, it's been moved and second to declare the draft. Environmental impact study incomplete and adequate for public view, are there any questions for motion? Seeing on favors and aye. Those opposed? Same right, motion carries. Will provide the list, efficiencies as to. Do you, can we run?
It sounds good.
Still being the words. Is there motion to adjourn? Without objection, we are adjourned, thank you. I'm just gonna, well.